Good afternoon, everyone. I notice all committee members are present, save for Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnic. So I'll move, I'll acknowledge her apology and move a leave of absence. Can I have a second? And councillor Antonelli, thanks very much for that. I'll move on to acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as the custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Are there any declarations of interest? No declarations of interest. I know there's no business outstanding. I'll move on to confirmation of the minutes of the Environment Sustainability Committee, number 2024 of 02 of 16 July 2024. Does somebody want to move those minutes? Councillor Augustine and second councillor Antonelli. Good. Any discussion about those minutes? There being no discussion, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is... Oh, yes, sorry. Thanks very much. Yep. Those in favour of the minutes? Those against? Carried. Thanks. Thanks, Vicky. Thanks for that. I thought I'd have a war there for a while. Alrighty, the next item on the agenda is officers' reports. The first report is SES Week 2024. This is a report regarding the annual SES Week campaign and the activities that are occurring in the city of Ipswich to recognise and celebrate the Ipswich City State Emergency Service Union, uh, unit as part of the SES Week 2024. Do I have a mover for that report? Thank you. Councillor Augustine, do I have a second? Thank you, Mayor. Any discussion? Does anyone require Matthew Pinder to answer any questions? Any discussion at all? Yes, Mayor?
If I may, Chair, just letting people know that SES Week is coming up. So it's great to see that we're having, um, the, our south-east region is quite large for SES. So this year, the actual celebration is going to be here in Ipswich. I think the last few years, certainly the last four years, it hasn't been in Ipswich. It's been either, I think, O Desert or Esk and yeah. So it's great to see it here. I also know that recently the state government provided, I think about eighty thousand dollars for two vehicles, which I think pays seventy-five percent of two vehicles. So I think council's shipping in the rest. So it's, I think, really important to make sure that they have equipment that is current, is modern, because they do such tough work. But look, SES is a great organisation. The volunteers are proactive, very personable, and the volunteering work is very satisfying. So if anyone's looking to join or become a volunteer, I encourage you to come along. The training's fantastic and it's a really great organisation.
Thanks, Mayor. Our orange angels are a great group. Now, does anyone have any questions of the council officer, Matt Pinder? If there's no questions, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Antonelli? Yep. All in favour? Carried. Now, the next item on the agenda is Get Ready Week 2024. This is a report concerning the state-led annual Get Ready Queensland Programme, including the Keystone event, Get Ready Week in October, and how council plans to promote the programme across Ipswich in 2024 to encourage all residents to learn about their disaster risk and the steps they can take to prepare for and build resilience to disasters in Ipswich. Do I have a mover for that report? Thank you. Councillor Augustine, second. Councillor Antonelli. Does, do members of the committee have any questions of the council officer?
Yes, Mark, council officer question.
I'd call Matt Pinder.
Good afternoon, Chair, Mayor and councillors. Happy afternoon.
Mr. Pinder, thank you. And through the Chair, do you mind just running through some of the stuff? I know you do this every year, but it's really important work and I know it's had a bit of rain so far and we saw overnight what happened in the Gold Coast. So do you mind just running us through what you'll be doing to support our community?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're looking at redoing the pop-ups at various shopping centres and community locations. So we received a lot of positive feedback around that direct engagement with community and providing that education. Again, we'll be working with the Ipswich libraries around story time and working with how they can prepare at home with their mum and dad and all that type of thing. We will do marketing campaigns in terms of billboard, social media and those usual more passive education activities. They'll be aligned to the findings of the market research that we've conducted in the last sort of twelve, eighteen months. Bit of a change this year in terms of the number or the volume. So previously, we've had a federally government-funded position to assist with delivering these. That was a position for two years. It's now ceased as of July, I think it is. So our ability to deliver the same numbers as last year, as we lead into these seasons, probably a little bit reduced. But we're making every effort to be out there, making sure that people are aware through those social media channels, leveraging the state government initiatives as well.
Mr. Pinder, the disaster dashboard's been very, a great source of information to people and I obviously love how it's the direct source. In the last few months, we've had greater accessibility with languages and sound. Is there, are there any other updates you're looking at for the disaster dashboard?
Yeah, so obviously the two you mentioned, the biggest one being the Read Speak, where visually impaired can read what's going on. We have now multiple dashboards on there, so we can actually switch between whether it's a bushfire, a severe weather event, and that provides different perspectives. We've also created custom URLs for those individual dashboards. So this time, for example, if we have a large event and we want a page dedicated to recovery, we could have disaster.ipswich forward slash recovery. And we could have that at the same time that we have an emerging disaster event around fire or something else. So that's, that's a big change. The other initiative was feedback around the flood camera views. So we've now got it that that is a direct page and you see all the cameras on one page as opposed to using the map. So you can use either and we're continuing to refine how that works.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you.
Do members have any other questions of Mr. Pinder?
Yeah, more of a, more of a statement, I guess. Just as having undertaken the recent disaster management training, an updated course, I guess, for myself, and also in company with councillor Madden and councillor Cullen, it was really good to hear the feedback that we got from Disaster Management Queensland about you and Christie and your efforts. So please, from this committee, take on board our, our great appreciation for the work you guys do and how you're held in very high esteem in emergency management Queensland. So it's a credit to you both. I think we've got the best team in Queensland, right here in Ipswich.
Thanks, councillor, and certainly the best council.
Any more questions for Mr. Pinder?
Mutual appreciation.
If there's no more questions, I'll just say thanks, Matt, and pass on our thanks to your team. Thanks very much. And enjoy Get Ready Week. Thanks, Matt. Report re-received and the contents noted. All in favour? Thanks. That's unanimous? Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Discussion, sorry, Mayor. Discussion.
Thank you. I know this happens every, every year, but obviously these when we do have natural disasters, we're a little, little bit more aware of it. But it's really important work, especially as we have so many people moving to Ipswich as well. So certainly, you know, we all know certain areas that flood, but we have so many new residents coming to Ipswich. It's really important for us to continue to get that information out. We do have a really fantastic and unfortunately a very experienced team when it comes to emergency management and disaster recovery. So it's, I know that the team doesn't have all that, all the staffing that they had in the previous years, but it'd be great to look at that in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Any other discussion? Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion. And those in favour? Those, all in favour? Unanimous. Now, the next item on the agenda is the notices of motion. The first notice of motion is by myself. This is a notice of motion submitted by myself concerning a proposed location for the Western Resource Recovery Centre at Mount Marrow. I gave notice of my intention to move the motion at this meeting today on the thirteenth of August 2024. What I propose is I'll move my motion and seek a second and then I'll make a short statement. Well, I'll move, I'll move, I'll move the motion and second councillor Antonelli. And now I'll make a short statement and then I'll ask if anyone wants to ask questions of the council officer. Although I was only elected as a councillor in March of this year, I'm aware that the Ipswich City Council have been planning to build a new Western Resource Recovery Centre for some time, because in 2021, the council was successful in receiving a grant from the state government to build a new refuse and recycling centre near the site of the current Rosewood Refuge and Recycling Centre at ninety-four and ninety-five Oakley Colliery Road, Rosewood. And in my former role as the Member for Ipswich West, I was pleased to support the application for a grant. Earlier this year, council engaged ATC Williams Consultants to consider fifteen possible sites for the new Western Resource Recovery Centre, and their report suggested three sites. Ninety-four and ninety-five Oakley Colliery Road, Rosewood. Lot one and two, unnamed road, Mount Marrow. Four hundred and eighty-six to five hundred and sixteen Ipswich, Rosewood, Ipswich, Rosewood Road, Jirupili. I'm moving my motion because having communicated with a number of residents about this issue and having concerned, having heard the concerns of those people along with the mayor at the Western Resource Recovery Centre pop-up session held at the Rosewood Library on July thirty, I am concerned that with the selection criteria used by ATC Williams, that possibly too much weight may be given to some criteria, such as whether council already owned the land that was being considered for the site, and not enough weight was given to other criteria, such as the proximity of the site to schools and culturally significant Aboriginal heritage sites. I am comfortable that the two remaining sites, Rosewood and Jirupili, and I am comfortable with the two remaining sites, Rosewood and Jirupili, and I invite residents of the, of residents to make a submission as to which of these sites they prefer. I'm very aware of the concerns of the residents of Mount Marrow area, as well as the concerns of students, staff and parents at Mount Marrow Primary School as to the inclusion of Mount Marrow as a possible site for the Western Resource Recovery Centre. It is my hope that by removing Mount Marrow as a possible site for the Western Resource Recovery Centre at this time, this will put to rest their concerns and I apologise for the community concerns in this regard. Now, do any members of the committee have any questions of the council officers? Yes, you do?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Probably more so to, I think, Kay than David, but, um, but maybe David, you can answer this as well. I don't know.
I think you've got a question, Dave.
Yeah.
Having had a look at some of the reports circulating around on this, including some of the consultation documents, there, with respect to this particular site, there's a dot point about the, there's dot points for the pros and cons. One of the cons is there are matters of state environmental significance found on the site, which will need to be considered for planning. Is that with respect to if this was to be utilised for a, for this facility? Is that right or is it just a?
I think it's a general, it's a general statement. So it might be fauna, it might be flora, it might be something that's noted as of significance. So no matter what the development is, you'd have to consider that.
Okay, all right. That's, yeah, it's probably all I really, that was the only question I really had in relation to that. So unless there's other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the recommendation is that the site at Mount Marrow identified its proposed location for the Western Resource Recovery Centre be removed from consideration. Mayor, did you have anything to say?
If I can.
Before, before I put the vote?
Yeah, Chair, I'd love to just outline a few things that I guess sort of came up just recently at the Rosewood Library. Would have been about over two years ago when, you know, I guess council started looking at locations for the Western Resource Recovery Centre. We knew for the southern, what land that the previous council, some years ago, had purchased, that land in Red Bank Plains. So we sort of knew that site. And we'd had some assessments done and there was, I think, a, an area, sort of a landfill area came to council, you know, as in a briefing session for discussion and immediately, as you probably remember councillor Madden, immediately the councils were like, no, we can't use that site. And I think that afternoon, yourself, councillor Madden, councillor Sheila Ireland, councillor Russell Mulligan, councillor Cat Coonsman went out to that site in the afternoon and sort of, sort of given the feedback to council that we shouldn't receive. But unfortunately, somehow it got leaked to the media and there was a, to the, one of the papers. And there's a lot of concern in the community. So that's why we had to sort of stop and pause. And we had this wonderful grant from you, Chair, when you were the Member for Ipswich West. And I know you weren't happy with us because the money went outside Ipswich West.
That's history, man.
But we, well, you know, you worked hard to get the money to Ipswich West. So, so, you know, we basically had to pause and have a long discussion because there was, I guess, because of the leaking the story, there was a lot of distrust. So we spent a lot of time in community consultation. It has been a slow process. But I think it's really important that we do this, this right. One of the things that came out as far as the community consultation, and I've attended many of them with Mr. Tanco, and I think before he started, people wanted the opportunity to put forward sites themselves, not just ones that council saw. And we also made a commitment that in that waiting criteria, council ownership wasn't going to be sort of part of that. And out of that, we sort of, we brought forward a council resolution similar to this to take out that landfill site. So anyway, so I'll just give you the history of how important it is. So we opened it up really openly and over seven hundred and fifty potential locations were put forward. And obviously, a lot of, seven hundred and thirty-four of those were privately owned properties. ATC Williams did that, that study and I think shortly it was down to about fifteen and now this is down to three. I'd like to point out that the Mount Marrow site that was identified was actually put forward by the community as, as, as one for us to, as, I shouldn't say us, for ATC, for the contractors to look at as well. So again, I see this as a continuation of this community consultation. So thank you very much, Chair, for, for bringing this forward. We do know we need to have a new expanded Western Resource Recovery Centre. It's not landfill, it is a transfer station. And we did get feedback from the community. They didn't know what, you know, what is a resource recovery centre. They have asked us to make sure we say words like, like as a, it's, it's a transfer station. They, that's what's used. So they have asked us in our consultation to use the terms that have been used for a long time. So, yeah, so I think it was really good, good feedback. I'll be supporting this. I also encourage people to put forward their, their views. The community consultation is open till the twenty-sixth of August. The next pop-up is this Saturday and I think we've moved locations to the Rosewood RSL. Twenty-fourth, sorry, not this Saturday, the twenty-fourth. At the, we've gone to a larger venue, to the Rosewood RSL Hall as well. So I encourage you to, to come along. I really encourage people to put forward their submissions, even if it's two lines, but just to let us know that we represent and serve the people. So, yeah, so thank you very much to all those who've been involved and thank you for this motion, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor, and I guess councillor Antonelli?
Yeah, if I may. I think that, I think that when you go out to community consultation, there's always a desire to have, particularly when you're considering options, to have about three options. But I think with the benefit of hindsight now, we can probably look at this one and reading the, the supporting material, that this one probably is the, the least desirable of all of them and probably was never going to get a gunsey. So perhaps this will just relieve some anxiety from that community to just remove it completely so that we're only really considering the two most viable options going forward.
Thanks very much for that, councillor Antonelli. Oh, yes, councillor Madden.
Just wanted to offer my support for your motion this morning, Chair, councillor Madden. So, yeah, similar process we had in Division One in the last term. Councillor Ireland and I had a matter at Calvert and not Lanefield. Just for the clarity for the community, there are no sites at Lanefield being considered whatsoever. So, yeah, that site at Calvert was nearby some housing. What of what drove the interest was it's currently owned by council. So that, I think that has played a bit of a role in this site being scoring so highly as well. So we'll continue to consider it moving forward as a council to go elsewhere where the community doesn't have an issue. That's ideal. It was a similar response from the community that I understand you've received around, from the Mount Marrow community, where people who don't typically engage with council, all of a sudden they're coming out for a community meeting about a topic and raising a concern. So I support you in that. I was very grateful to receive the support of my fellow councillors in the last term. I think sometimes it's forgotten, well, it's frustrating how long it's taken us to commence building one of these new facility out here and commend you for your patience, councillor Madden. But this is a piece of infrastructure that we want to last for decades, right? So we do want to get it right. It's going to be something that hopefully operates for many years, many, many years, thirty, forty, fifty years. So appreciate you bringing this forward today and happy to support it.
Councillor Augustine, if you want to say anything? Okay, good. Well, I would like to say something. I'd like to thank all of those residents and the council staff that attended the community pop-up session at Rosewood. I was pleased to be able to support you in a small way that night in that very small room. But, but I must say, even at its worst, the people who were making their, their point were doing so respectfully. It never ever got to the point that it was disrespectful. They had a lot of questions and we answered everyone, mainly council staff answered everyone. But I thought it was, I left that meeting feeling very well, that we'd done what we wanted to achieve. And I'm sure the next pop-up session will be the same, but we'll, we'll have one thing removed from the discussions that, and we can talk about, hopefully talk about Rosewood and Jirupili at that pop-up session. And I was very pleased that the mayor was able to attend that pop-up session as well. It was great to see you there, Mayor, and you spoke very well at that session and you spoke very well again today. Well, that being the case, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, I should say what the motion is. The recommendation is that the, and this is a recommendation, that the site at Mount Marrow identified as proposed location with the Western Resource Recovery Centre be removed from consideration. Are those in favour? Good. Thank you. That's unanimous. Thanks. Thanks very much, councillors. Now, I'll move on to a second motion that I have today, maybe a little less controversial. The second motion concerns the proposed Southern Resource Recovery Centre. This is a motion submitted by myself concerning the facilities that will be at the, at the proposed Southern Resource Recovery Centre. Myself, and I gave intention to move the following motion to this committee on the thirteenth of August 2024. I'll move it and ask for a second, councillor Madden? Thank you, councillor Madden. And I'll say a few words and then I'll throw it open for discussion. Now, with regard to my motion that council officers prepare a report relating to costings and a review as to the possibility of the facilities that the proposed resource, Southern Resource Recovery Centre include a tip shop where items that would otherwise go to landfill could be sold, a tool library where residents can loan, can loan tools for use instead of buying cheap tools and disposing them in landfill, a toy library where residents can loan children's toys and play equipment, a repair centre or a cafe, a repair cafe where residents can take items to learn how to repair and reuse these items, and any other relevant issues. Now, I need to make clear that on the thirteenth of June, myself and councillor Antonelli met with Danielle Mutton in my capacity as Chair of this committee and councillor Antonelli in his capacity as co-chair of this committee. Ms. Mutton raised the possible extension of the facilities at the Southern Resource Recovery Centre. And I believe that her suggestions are worthy of investigation by council officers. Now, does, do any members have any questions of council officers? If there's no questions of council officers, I'll throw it out to discussion. Do members have any, any matters they wish to discuss? Yes, Mayor?
Now, thank you. And I think we're probably all in regular conversations with Ms. Martin on this matter. Obviously, as the previous Chair of all Waste Matters, we've had part of the community panel. I encourage anyone who's, who's passionate about this to join the community panel. It's face-to-face as well as on Shap your Ipswich. So we, we've opened this up to residents to get their feedback and very much it was the community's feedback that they do want to have these matters looked at, potentially a tip shop, a tool library, toy library, repair centre and things like that. So I'm not saying we definitely got to do it, but they certainly asked us to look at this. So I see this as sort of ratifying that. And I just go back to the 2021, 2031 Resource Recovery Implementation Plan that this council passed back in 2021, which talked about supporting innovative and viable resource recovery opportunities, also looking at end market development, looking at appropriate support and guidance to, to develop the material recovery facility. It was called a recycling mart, which I guess would be a tip shop, which is instigated a recycling mart in Ipswich to capture and divert recyclable items from entering landfill. But a big part of this too would be education. So school education programmes, community education and obviously the residential subsidy scheme or tip vouchers to be looked at, as well as delivering on new recycle refuse centres as well, which we're looking at. So obviously strongly support this. I think it's been in train for, for some time. So very happy to support this and thank you for bringing this.
Thanks very much, Mayor. Do any other councillors have anything to contribute? Yes, councillor Augustine?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Mayor, for talking about the community consultation. Before I was a councillor, I was actually part of that community consultation. And yes, all of those things were brought up very strongly by the community. So yes, I'll be supporting this as I did on that community engagement. Thanks, Chair.
That's great. Councillor Augustine. Councillor Antonelli?
Yes, through the Chair and just a couple of things. I think former councillor, um, just trying to think who it was now, Kerry Silver would be very pleased to hear this too, because this was one of her passions when she entered council back in 2016. The, the other thing that I might moot, if I may, the notion that the, the men shed down there at Bundam, but they've been looking for a, a new facility for the future, for their growth, because they're growing exponentially. And I can just imagine the gentleman down there at the men shed working in the repair centre or a repair cafe and offering their expertise to people, to assist them, to continue to hold on to some of their goods before they actually throw them away. So their, their skills and certainly their passion for that sort of stuff would also be of great use to a facility such as that. So we may even be able to incorporate community groups such as them in this programme.
That's great. Now, if I can just give a free plug in this regard, this weekend at the River View Transfer, River View Recycling and Refuge Centre, it's free to drop off hazardous items, believe it or not. So I think the traffic control officers will have a busy day on Sunday when this opens, given the response I've had from social media since posting this. But it's great to see this sort of innovative programmes going on. And I'm looking forward to when we'll have a free day at the Rosewood Refuge and Recycling Centre for that. Well, if there's no further question, oh, yes, Mayor?
Sorry, Chair. I think when we look at the designs for the Southern Resource Recovery Centre, there's a lot of things that we really want to do and I know it's going to come down to money. So I think we need the plan and we need to be ready to have things. So I think we need the plan and we need to be ready to have things good to go for grant opportunities. There seems to be quite a bit of support from the state and the federal governments to, to not, to divert things from landfill and to be more environmentally sustainable. So I think it's, I think that we'll probably have a staged approach where we do do something here, but I think we do need those plans to take advantage of those opportunities.
And Mayor, I'll just reiterate a point that you made earlier. It's like when we talk about a tip shop and whether that's appropriate or not, I really do think we have to think about using terminology that people understand. The amount of time I had to spend explaining to people, not understanding that Rosewood is a transfer centre, that this new facility that was going to replace Rosewood is not a landfill, you know? And I spent so much time doing that. And as you know, Mayor, that was raised at the Rosewood Library. Why don't we just call it a transfer station because it's a transfer station? I, I mean, I leave that to the council officers, but I, I can tell you, David, that was a big item, that was a big issue in Rosewood. This long thing, Rosewood Resource and Recovery Centre didn't quite catch, you know? But that's something for council officers to deal with. If there's, if there's no.
Sorry, Chair. And I guess the other thing too, certainly with the community panel, they're usually very interested to see the lay of the land. So I know before you were in council, we did a road trip out to the Southern Resource Recovery Centre so everyone could see the land, what was there. I guess when we do finally pick a site, you know, it's something we could always do for the Western Transfer Station.
Which is, yes. Chair, yes, yes, councillor Medson?
If I may, I just wanted to sort of reiterate my support for the motion. A number of councils in Australia already have these sorts of things. I can never remember if it was Noosa or Sunshine Coast Council where in a volunteering role, I had to pick up some stuff from their tip shop. And what happens there is all of the items, you drive into the transfer station and at the first stop, everything in your trailer on the back of your truck is diverted at that point to the tip shop if it is available for resale. And that is just a key methodology of what we're trying to build is something I'm supportive of because that just means that useful items don't go into landfill. They're repurposed and reused by people that need them.
Now, thanks for that councillor Medson. I've often, often thought that, I think there could be some connection here between our men sheds and this sort of issue. I mean, when a, when a cupboard has just a small, you know, the handle of it, you know, the men shed will rebuild the thing. So I think this is a very productive process we're going through and with regard to Danielle Mutton's suggestions. And I'm very much looking forward to the report that's prepared by council officers. Well, there being no more questions, I'll put the motion. And I won't, not going to repeat it because it's so long. So those in favour? Carried unanimously. Now, the next item is matters arising and I don't, I don't have any matters arising. The other one is procedural motions and formal matters. I don't think we have any procedural matters and formal matters. That being the case, I'll close the meeting at 2:05. Meeting closed.